In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, first, we'd like to send our prayers and our best wishes to our colleague, Senator Pangolinan, for his speedy recovery. Thank you, Lord, for sending your Spirit upon him and for being with him as he improved in his health. And we're very grateful that you have kept our dear friend and colleague close to you and that he is getting better. Thank you, Lord, so much. It is written, God, that "that which you do for the least of my brethren you do unto me." And as we proceed of this session, let us remember those divine words that you have guided us with. You've also made it very clear that any suffering that we do in your name is a blessing. And so, in your name, Heavenly Father, we ask that you send your Spirit down upon us as we proceed with this session and as we proceed with some issues that, as you know, have been pretty heavy in our community and have brought challenges and difficulties. And only through your grace will we be able to truly navigate this in a way that will be good for your people. And we ask that you bless us and you give us the wisdom that we need in order to do right by what you would want us to do. And so, we pray this in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
In the phrase, "Ginini must attack you, he has a sock. He must attack you, he could have shown you. Then he must speak, and then he will see you. Who press in my sago, for a bay who protect you. Then who defend you, he can nengi. He could turn, he language, he ari, he hanno, then he tanu tomoro. Near and shock you, direct you, he will show you, stop. Esti who a fit ma, he will with Biblia, then he bandera who, he bandera Guan. (Music) 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 (Music)
Row call. Senator Tom Adam. Senator Tony Adam. Senator Uggins. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duennas. Senator Lintiafo. Senator McCready. Senator Morrison. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Ruspisho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Siniklis. Speaker Wondat. Senator Yamashita. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader, Senator Ruspisho, you're recognized for motions.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good morning, and good morning, colleagues. I move that we excuse our colleagues not present for today's session.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I call for the approval of the Legislative Journal dated June 11th, 12, and 16, 2014, all subject to correction.
No objections, so ordered.
There are communications and petitions, and I move that they be filed, that they be filed to today's Session Journal.
No objections, so ordered.
There are messages from Imagallan Guan, and I also move that these messages from the Governor be added to today's Session Journal.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
There are reports of standing committees, and I move for the same.
Objections, so ordered.
And there are no reports of select committees, so under introduction and first reading of bills and resolutions, I move that Bill Number 350-32COR through Bill Number 367-32COR, Resolution Number 402-32LS, Resolution Number 403-32COR through Resolution 412-32COR, Certificate Number 160-32COR through Certificate Numbers 163-32COR all be given its first reading.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I'd just like to pause for a moment to give any of our colleagues an opportunity to make any override attempt if they desire to do so at this time. Are there any override attempts? Having said that, Madam Speaker, my first motion is, we are in receipt of two letters from Senator Frank Uggins Jr. Both letters were dated June 30, 2014. And the first letter from Senator Uggins to yourself is to request the waiver of the public hearing requirement for Bill 312-32LS, an act relative to appropriating the funds in the GMHA Healthcare Trust and Development Fund to the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority pursuant to Public Law 3260 by amending subsection B of subsection 97, 103, Chapter 97, Article 1, Title 10 of GCA, and that this matter is before you for your consideration.
Okay. Can we change that one? Thank you very much, Senator Ruspisho. Yes, I do have a letter, and I've submitted a copy to the primary sponsor and as well to the clerk, therefore waiving the requirement of a public hearing on Bill 312.
Okay, so having received your decision, Madam Speaker, and thank you, I move that this bill be placed in the second reading file.
No objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Colleagues, Madam Speaker, Senator Uggins also writes to you in the same request on the matter of Bill 340-32COR, an act relative to the transfer of Guam Department of Agriculture property to the Office of Veterans Affairs with respect to the boundaries of the Guam Veteran Cemetery. And the Senator writes that he's respectfully requesting your consideration to waive the public hearing because, as we know, the Veterans Affairs through federal funds is undergoing some important and necessary makeover of the veteran cemetery, and that this action by the legislature and hopefully by the Governor is necessary to complete that process.
Thank you, Senator. And yes, based on our evaluation and the urgency also to get this bill on the agenda is that I also then waive the requirement of that public hearing as well.
So I also, again, we thank you for that decision, and I move that Bill 340-32COR also be placed in the second reading file.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, under motions, I move that any resolutions or certificates of commendation, congratulatory, or condolence in nature, that it be adopted and introduced for the duration of this session be adopted, that the sponsor work with the legal counsel and the clerk and her staff in the preparation of these documents, and that all Senators be co-sponsors.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I have no further motions, and there being no legislative concurrence, no consent calendar, we're prepared now to be in the second reading file.
Thank you very much, Senator. So the first bill on the agenda, the Chair recognizes Senator Tommy Morrison on Bill Number 317-32LS.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 317 into the third reading file, and I'd like to speak on it.
Okay, so the bill as introduced. That's what I have here, I just want to make sure. It is as introduced.
As introduced, yes, Madam Speaker.
So you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the information age is upon us, and there has been no other time in our history or civilization where information has been accessible and available to us, and we owe this to the Internet. Today, we can chat face-to-face with friends around the world, we can send photos instantly to loved ones, we can send money from a bank on Guam to a bank in California by the use of a cellphone. With this evolution, Madam Speaker, of convenience and information, there also comes the evolution of new types of crimes via the Internet. According to the Interpol website, today, more and more criminals are exploiting the speed, convenience, and anonymity of the Internet to commit a diverse range of criminal activities that know no borders, either physical or virtual. A report last month in Bloomberg says that cybercrime remains a growth industry with a staggering $445 billion a year theft due to computer hackers. And the report also states that this will only get worse. Recently, Madam Speaker, through our media outlets, have reported that there have been 400 accounts of our residents that have been compromised or rather hacked. And there's also been another report that there's been a security breach with the IT system with the Chamber of Commerce. This type of activity, Madam Speaker, is robbing our people on Guam of their hard-earned money, and that is why throughout the nation, there has been a great trend throughout the states that are passing legislation to deal with this type of cybercrime or activity. Bill 317, Madam Speaker, is the Anti-Fishing Act, which punishes individuals who use deceptive means to steal bank account numbers, social security, and passwords from the Internet. Phishing, it's P-H-I-S-H-I-N-G, is the act of attempting to acquire information such as usernames, passwords, credit cards, bank account information details by masquerading as a trustworthy entity in electronic communication. The bill will make fraud via phishing a third-degree felony and fine criminals up to $25,000 per violation. The bill would also allow victims to recover up to $2 million in civil damages. Madam Speaker, Guam statute is very limited in protecting Guam residents from these types of crimes, and we must begin adopting laws that are relevant to criminal activity in the information age. I ask my colleagues that they support Bill 317, and we adopt with this type of activity in the information age. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion? Senator Siniklis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a couple of questions, because as I'm reading the bill, it sounds like it's intended to address gaps in our statutes with respect particularly to online violations. But when you actually read the areas that it's trying to address, it doesn't specifically address online violations. For example, on page three, line one, phishing, nowhere in that entire section does it specifically make reference to online violations. And so, I'm kind of just trying to make sure that this isn't, it isn't going to be changing anything that may already be codified with respect to this type of violation. So for example, if you read the phishing section on lines one through eight, it talks about intent to defraud, facilitating a fraud or injury to be perpetuated by anybody, and then it kind of lists subdefinitions of that. But I'm just concerned that, you know, because it's not specific to only online fraud, does this then change that kind of violation in the code? Because it's kind of speaking towards something that should already be codified under public law. And so, I kind of wanted to, I wanted to pose that as an inquiry to the, a question to the author, that the author will yield.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker. May I ask, what code are we referring to, what section of the code are we referring to currently?
I could pull it up, but there's already statute with respect to fraud, so...
Yeah, we're talking about fraud, Madam Speaker, but what we're dealing with, again, this is to augment, I believe he's referring to, in the general operations, we're referring to the penal cult, where we're now penalizing those to violate our people for these types, through these types of crimes. Phishing, again, as defined, is clearly through online activity, so I think, I believe that covers that in a sense.
The bill, Madam Speaker, the bill doesn't mention fishing, the definition of fishing anywhere.
It's in subsection 46.401, definition.
I'm going to take a brief recess.[1111.61]
On the motion, on Bill 319, any senator wish to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. In consultation of the author, we do have two amendments that we would like to proffer. Just to, and the intent is to narrow the, the impact of the bill to specifically the content that's provided so that we don't cause a ripple effect in other Guam laws that may already somehow, whether directly or indirectly, address these issues. We don't want to necessarily create confusion in the court system that we have different statutes that have different purposes. So, on page three, line one, at the beginning of the, of the sentence after the word fishing, add, "For the purposes of this chapter." So it will read, "Fishing." For the purposes of this chapter, an individual or entity is guilting of fishing if," and then it will continue on with the remaining language. So we're going to narrow it strictly to the, to the chapter.
Any senator wish to be heard on that amendment? Any objection? There being no objection.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And again, on page three-
Just a second. It should probably be Article, since the, page one is Article four.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the purposes of this article.
Well, with your permission, can I have-
Yes.
-legal counsel in whichever is more correct-
Sure.
Article or chapter? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And the same for, the same discretion to legal counsel for page three, line nine, after the word farming. For the purposes of this chapter or article, whichever is more legally accurate.
Any objection to that amendment? Hearing none.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. On the main motion, any senator wish to be heard on the main motion? Seeing no hands, the sponsor is recognized to close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just want to thank my colleague for his contribution to Bill 317. And I'd like to add an amendment to include him as a co-sponsor. Senator Siniklis.
There being no objection. On the motion to place Bill 312-32 as amended on the floor in the voting file, any objection? Hearing none. Senator Morrison, I believe your, the next bill is also yours, Bill 318. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Bill 318 is the Computer Protection Act, which punishes individuals who reuse computers and/or Internet connections of others for the purposes of spamming with the intent to deceive or mislead recipients or of an electronic mail service provided as the origin of the message. Spam is irrelevant or inappropriate messages sent on to Internet, to a large number of recipients. And again, key to this legislation is there needs to be an attempt to deceive, mislead, and defraud using spam. Mr. Speaker, this bill addresses Internet crimes intended to defraud the public. And again, Guam statute has been very limited to protecting Guam residents from these types of crimes. I ask my colleagues, Mr. Speaker, for their support in Bill 318, and I welcome any feedback to improve the bill if necessary. Thank you.
On Bill 318, any senator wish to be heard on this bill? Senator Siniklis.
I'd like to request a brief recess, Mr. Speaker, just to refine language again.
Brief recess. To place Bill 318 in the third reading file with a discussion, there being no objection. And the discussion has just concluded, I believe. Any, any other senator wish to be heard on the, on the bill? There being none, the author is invited to close.
Mr. Speaker, I'd just like to add an amendment to include Senator Siniklis as a co-sponsor.
Okay, there being no objection. On the motion to place the bill in the voting file, hearing no objections, so ordered. I believe the next bill is also yours, Senator Morrison, Bill 319. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Bill 319 is the Computer Spyware Protection Act, which punishes individuals who, without the knowledge or permission of the owner, place spyware on another person's computer. Spyware is software that enables user, the user to obtain or convert information from another's computer, its activities by transmitting data converting from their hard drive. Mr. Speaker, this bill addresses Internet crime intended to defraud the public. Again, Mr. Speaker, Guam statute has been very limited to protecting Guam residents from these types of crimes. And I ask my colleagues to support Bill 319, and I welcome any feedback that, that may be necessary. Thank you.
On the motion, on Bill 319, any senator wish to be heard? Any senator wish to be heard on 319? Seeing no hands, the sponsor is recognized to close. On the motion to send the bill down to the voting file, no objection. The next bill on the agenda, Bill 249, introduced by Senator V. Antonieta. Senator Eddy, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to place Bill 24932 as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Deal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land until the third reading file. I'd like to speak on it, please.
Any objection? Seeing none.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Bill 24932 is just, it's an act just to reprogram the sum of $375,000 to the Department of Public Works for the paving of the Roy T. Damian Street and the Mamis Street. And as you know, during many of these past several years, that during the construction of the Tri-Intersection and of the O'Brien Drive from Agania Pull-up, that many people have traversed through the Roy T. Damian Street. And the damage that was already done to the street, in, in addition to the, the heavy traffic that was traversing through there during the construction period, has really put a toll on that, that section of road that we want to ensure we are able to repair. And this, this bill does just that, and it appropriates the money to the Roy T. Damian Street so that we can get this, this road repaired. And also to the Mamis Street in Manila, which all it does is just pave a section there so that there's a safe entrance and exit way onto Mamis Street in Manila. And I humbly ask my, my colleagues for their support on this bill. I'd just like to make one amendment to, to the bill.
Please.
And that's on page two, on line six and seven, where it says, "Department of Public Works May Authorize No More Than $20,000 to Resolve Safety Issues." I'd like to just amend that from 20,000 to 40,000. And in talking with the Director of Public Works, he felt that 40,000 is a more realistic figure, just so that we can ensure that the anti-skid pavement that are placed on the roads, we will have enough to ensure that those that need it will be able to get it.
On that amendment, any objection? Any senator wish to be heard on the amendment changing the appropriation on line six to 40,000? Hearing and seeing none. It is within that, all right? Any objection? You may continue, Senator. If not, Senator Munia Barnes? Any other senator wish to be heard?
Thank you. And good morning, Mr. Speaker. I'd just like to stand and rise and thank the good author of this legislation for giving me the consideration to be a co-sponsor of Bill 249-32. COR is amended, and looking at the recent amendment that was amended to reflect what needed to be changed for the safety issues, I just want to take the time to say thank you. And in the efforts of working with the mayors and, and knowing that these two items will finally get addressed, I just want to say thank you for him working closely with the mayors. So I stand in support of this Bill 249-32 COR, and I'd like my colleagues to see if they could also share their support and, and support the efforts so that the mayors from these villages can make sure that the concerns of the streets and the passage through their, their villages are taken care of. Sinamasi.
Thank you very much. Senator Duñez, any other senator after Senator Duñez which to be heard on the bill? Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Sinamasi, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to rise and, of course, full support of Bill 24932. And I join the retiring speaker in thanking the mover of this bill for the opportunity to be a co-sponsor. Mr. Speaker, there is a little bit more of a story behind this bill that I just wanted to expound upon real quickly this morning, and that is really the success of the Department of Public Works when they're given the resources to conduct their business. Mr. Speaker, this funding source, albeit modest, at $375,000, is the result of savings on another project that they did up in Gigo in order to fix a road that was formerly littered with potholes and with children walking to school, trying to avoid those potholes filled with water when it rained. And the vision of that project was completed with excess revenue. And that's the revenue we're looking at here, Mr. Speaker. So once again, a very modest project will be accomplished. But, Mr. Speaker, more importantly, I think it's the symbolism of this bill that is important to understand its significance. And that is that, aside from federal highways and those roads that, of course, should be under our benefit as an island, as, as being part of the federal family, those dollars to be spent to repair those roads wherein, Mr. Speaker, we have other roads that service interior of our village and our people, that Public Works stands ready to do the job not only efficiently, but do as much of it as possible. We all know, in many places right now, there is great need, especially interior of our villages. Last session, we passed a bill to make sure that Sinahunya was included in, in the flood mitigation plans. And, and a lot of things that we're trying to do here, Mr. Speaker, but I thought I could not overemphasize the importance. Once again, I've heard it said sometimes in the media, maybe on a talk show or two, that this is, is really a, a minor amount, and that is true. But the fact of the matter is, is the symbolic value, I believe, cannot be overstated. The savings that was, was, was found up in Gigo, I believe that was a $1.6 million project that, and that this is the result of, of the savings- this is the result of the savings to do more work, more with less, Mr. Speaker. And so I certainly rise in full support of this. And as we go into the budget season, perhaps we can find little pots of money as we go along as well to be able to conquer some of these major issues of taking care of our roadways in the villages wherein federal resources are not available. So, Madam Speaker, at this time, I say once again, Sisusmosi, for the opportunity, and humbly ask the body to please consider a unanimous vote on 249-32. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Tom Adda, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly rise in support of Bill 249-32. In fact, I'm surprised that just now we're getting to this. I know that this, I think we were looking at this project for quite a while. I do have a question, though, if the author would yield, and that is, on page two there, line five, the new language was put in there, setting aside, I guess now it's been amended, no more than $40,000 to resolve safety issues such as application of anti-skid pavement on portions of side roads that are immediately abutting Roy T. Damien Street. And I think it will not hurt if we simply say the portions of public side roads or something to that effect, so that we're not talking about paving into private driveways.
Senator on the motion, I mean, do you yield to the question?
Yeah, Madam Speaker, the, on the side roads, that was like Casimiro Street, how it goes down and things like that.
Yeah, I know that there's that one road that's really steep up.
And I think also Biang Street that goes up, I think that's the name of the street that's adjacent to Casimiro.
Can you please address the question?
Oh, I'm sorry. So the, I mean, I don't have any problems with, if you just want to put public easement, that's fine with me, Madam Speaker. But that's what the issues were, is the streets that were abutting the main throughway of Roy T. Damien.
Senator, are you satisfied?
Madam Speaker, then, if actually then the author is aware of the specific side roads that really needs to be addressed, and I'm familiar with the side roads that he's talking about, then maybe we should go ahead and be really more specific that those are the two roads that we're talking, two side roads that we're talking about. And so I would ask, I forget what's the name of that.
Madam Speaker, I know those are the two side roads, but I believe there's other streets as you go along Roy T. Damien, and I don't want to just limit it just to Casimiro and the other street there, and then we inadvertently leave out, I think it's Manglotnia Street by the old Manglotnia store, that's also a steep incline, or, you know, other streets that are there. I think if the, if the senator from Manila wants to just put public easement, I think that would be best, and let's not limit the director as to, you know, if we say those two streets and those two streets only, and then we find out that other streets are needed, they'll be back here again trying to address that issue.
Thank you for that information, Senator Adda. You still have the floor?
Madam Speaker, I'm fine with that. So I think maybe inserting the word on line eight, "Anti-skid pavement on portions of public side roads."
So on the amendment, then, is to add the word "public" before "side roads" on line eight, page two. No objections? So ordered. On the motions, is there anyone else who would like to speak on the amended Bill 249? There being none, Senator, you want to close?
Yes, Madam Speaker. If I could just make an amendment to add Senator McCready and Senator Tom Adda as co-sponsors?
On that motion, no objections, so ordered. On the motion, then, to send 249 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator Tom Adda on Bill 355?
Thank you. Madam Speaker, I move that Bill 355-32 COR, as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure, Maritime Transportation, be moved to the third reading, and I would like to discuss it.
And that's as amended?
As amended, yes, ma'am.
Yes, you may proceed, Senator.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, Bill 355-32 COR, as amended, is a bill that will authorize the Department of Public Works to acquire a tract of property, 240 square meters, in Maritzo through the exercise of eminent domain. The property that is to be acquired is needed in order to accommodate the reconstruction of the Piguah Bay Bridge. I'm sure everyone is familiar who has traveled to Maritzo. There are two bridges there that have been, for the last eight years now, been a single-lane bridge. These two bridges were actually declared unsafe back in 2005, and immediately the following year, the bridges were then temporarily replaced by a single-lane bridge. So when you're going either way, traffic must stop so that there's only one vehicle on the bridge at any one time. Now, the Federal Highway Administration has made funds available for the reconstruction of these two bridges. This is a project that will cost about $4 million. What has taken so long for the Department of Public Works is actually, aside from the design, is actually identifying who the landowners are that are involved in this reconstruction of the bridge, so that we can, so that Department of Public Works can acquire the land that is needed. So far, Department of Public Works has been able to acquire all the tracts of private property that is needed to accommodate this project, with the exception of a 240-square-meter piece of property, lot number 150-R3-1RW. This particular lot is 240 square meters. About 85% of this property will actually be sitting underneath the bridge itself, and the remaining 15% of that property is actually going to be used for a bioswale to allow runoff water to actually, to actually be filtered through before running off into the bay. The, this particular lot is actually a carved-out piece, of a larger piece of about 4,900 square meters. So the lot that is being acquired through eminent domain represents about 5% of the entire private property from which this small piece is coming from. Now, usually in the process of acquiring private property for public use, it's specifically required that the department must make contact with the private property owner and see if an amicable resolution can be reached. And if it is, then it ends there, the transaction is made, and everybody moves on happy. In this particular case, it has been almost over a year since the department has tried to make contact with the private property owner, actually, I guess, the administrator of the property, because the actual property owner has passed away many years ago. Unfortunately, the department has not been able to make contact with the owner who lives there, won't, you know, just won't respond. I think on two occasions, he did the individual acknowledged receipt of the letter from DPW informing them that the property is needed for a public project. But other than that, the property owner never came back to indicate whether, you know, this was agreeable with them, or was there an alternative option that maybe could be worked out? Nothing at all. And I do know that the department, I believe, on, one, two, three, four separate occasions, has tried to make contact with the administrator of the property and another one of the siblings, and all to no avail. Basically, doors, knocking on the doors, no answer, no response to the mail. And so I guess the only development from this was that the property, the administrator of the property, has retained an attorney to initiate probate proceedings, but it does not in any way affect the, this land-taking. And so the property has been appraised, it has gotten two appraisals within the past 12 months, and the money has been set aside. And so if this bill is passed and the legislature authorizes the Department of Public Works to acquire the property, the money will then be put in escrow. The property owner, the administrator, of course, has a certain amount of time, and if he feels that the amount of money that is to be paid for the property is not reasonable, notwithstanding the two appraisals that have been done, independent appraisals, then, of course, there's the option to take it to the court to be able to then state the case over there. But nonetheless, once, if Bill 355 is passed and authority is given, then the project can move forward. With that, Mr. Speaker, I'll go ahead and sit down and allow other members to discuss. Thank you.
Senator Morrison has indicated an interest. Senator Uggan, any other senator wish to be heard on this bill? All right, Senator Morrison, and then Senator Uggan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I, first of all, want to thank the author for moving this Bill 355 expedited through the process after the public hearing. We all know the situation down in the South, and I think many of you have ran into many of our southern residents who have pleaded their case and hoping that we can address these bridges down there. Again, the author really clearly outlined a lot of the issues or concerns that I had in Bill 355. I just want to pose that it's unfortunate that our government has truly acted in our best interest or for the, throughout, for our people of Guam, and have exhausted many options to resolve this, and it's unfortunate that we have to exercise eminent domain to address this issue. Mr. Speaker, it's clear that if you're going there, sometimes going through those bridges, you can, you sense that there, you feel there's a public safety issue of these bridges. And I think it's even becoming more alarming when we're seeing heavy truckloads that are still using these bridges when I believe they're not supposed to. And every day, our children, our families are using these bridges to get home. So I rise in support of Bill 355, and I hope that we can get these bridges addressed a lot sooner than is possible, so that we can address these public safety issues. I also believe that it will open up further potential economic opportunities or opportunities for our families to have better access to building homes or other types of economic activities or businesses in the area. So I thank the author, Mr. Speaker, for his effort in moving 355 through, and that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Senator Uggan, followed by Senator Duñez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and good morning to you and our fellow colleagues. You know, Mr. Speaker, when I saw the report on this particular measure, I know that I have just briefly discussed with the sponsor of this legislation about whether, in fact, options were explored in looking at a land swap. And then I looked at the square footage of 240 square feet. Obviously, it's a very small parcel of property, and looking at land exchanges, perhaps may be an unreasonable approach. But regardless, I still signed, reported out in the committee report, because when it comes to land condemnation, obviously, every effort needs to be exerted by the government of Guam. And based on the sponsor's communication and message this morning, he has shared that inclusive of DPW officials, inclusive of the mayor's office, that they had tried to contact the property owners of this parcel of property. That being the case, Mr. Speaker, it's only, I guess, in my case, just looking at this and trying to understand if, in fact, the government had exhausted every effort towards acquiring this property, either through outright purchase or outright land swap, I believe that just based on the comments that have been shared, not only on the floor this morning, but also in prior discussions with the sponsor of this legislation, I believe that good effort, reasonable effort, has been exerted in that direction. Then I take it to a different aspect of public benefit. When we look at every other parcel of property that will be affected by the expanded bridge for the people of Moleso in the South and for the entire island community, public benefit after eight years is eight years too long. Those two bridges, Mr. Speaker, had been confined to a singular lane because of safety reasons for now over eight years. And this process certainly has to proceed in terms of not only expending the federal resources that have been identified for this project, and to perhaps prevent any unnecessary penalties associated with proceeding with this project, then this legislation is the appropriate route to take. But I do share, want to share, Mr. Speaker, that obviously there's always reservation when we have to take property from private owners without their negotiation or without their input in terms of their asking price, as well as the eventual transfer of property. But in this case, I've got to lean in the direction of public benefit. Ultimately, after eight years, the people of Moleso have waited far too long to get these bridges constructed and completed, and I certainly hope that within the next reasonable timeframe, whether it be a year, two years, that they will have that direct benefit for not only the people of Moleso, the people in the South, but just as importantly, the entire island community. So I stand sharing those particular perspectives. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Sisusmosi, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to rise in support of Bill 355. I think it's important, once again, as in a previous piece of legislation I spoke on, to understand the history here. But I want to start by appreciating a comment that the author of this bill made in a media outlet, where he stated that even one square inch of property to be taken under this method is something that should be heavily scrutinized and only done after every opportunity has been exhausted. Mr. Speaker, a colleague of ours in the 31st Guam Legislature introduced legislation to address the attention, at least, to be given to the matter of these two bridges down in Moleso. And at the time, I had actually proffered that question, and I remember the chairman saying and stating unequivocally, "That process is long, cumbersome, but necessary in terms of when we go and move forward on finalizing that type of procedure." And I respect that, Mr. Speaker, and I agree. But the time has come. In fact, I think we're past time, and I appreciate the author for moving forward and introducing this bill, which is a tough thing to do. Mr. Speaker, as our retiring speaker as well from Yumatic mentioned, the public safety issues are overriding here when we talk about these two bridges in Moleso. But the other issue, after safety, of course, Mr. Speaker, is convenience. We're now going into a decade with regard to how long it's taken to address this issue. Many people living in the South have gotten up extra early in the morning, I'm sure, to deal with backed-up traffic heading north to their jobs. Many of our guests, we all know where the jewel is on our island when it comes to visiting Guam. Yes, some people believe it's in Tuamuan shopping, but most people believe it's in the South to look at the Emerald Seas and the flora and fauna and just the hospitality and the beauty that is the South. Mr. Speaker, every day, buses, rental cars, sometimes motorcycles, and other types of transportation, mopeds, go down to the South to visit that beautiful place, and even us, Mr. Speaker, on our treks down south, get lined up behind those vehicles, and it's just time for that to end. So, Mr. Speaker, I commend the author of this legislation, and I, and I appreciate his leadership, and I think it's time for this body to move forward, get this done for the public benefit, the common good, and to ensure that we do this type of due diligence, albeit very reservingly, Mr. Speaker. So, Sidoos Mosi for the opportunity to rise in support of this bill.
Thank you very much, Senator Duñez. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Senators Nicholas, anybody after him? Senator Nicholas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in full support of Bill number 355, and I kind of just wanted to express a different kind of sentiment. A lot of the, a lot of the sentiments that were expressed were with respect to the use of eminent domain and how we need to be as judicious as possible when it comes to exercising that power of the government, and I wholeheartedly agree. At the same time, I'm very grateful that Senator Ada has moved this forward because, as it was expressed earlier by Senator Uggan as well, eight years is too long for us to be holding the people of Moleso in limbo for trying to figure out how they're going to be able to navigate through these bridges as they slowly continue to deteriorate. It's, it's a very good thing for our government to be able to, when necessary, exercise eminent domain for the benefit of the entire community if and when those circumstances manifest themselves, that the entire community needs to have the government step in and protect their best interests. We need to be doing a lot more of that, not just when it comes to getting bridges built in villages, but when it comes to making sure that we're taking care of our students, when it comes to making sure providing for public safety. We need to be bold enough to do even what may be considered uncomfortable, so whether it's utilizing eminent domain or as we go into the budget cycle, making sure that money is going exactly where we need it in this community. I think that that's, that's something that we're going to have to be focusing a lot more energy and attention on. So, I wanted to thank Senator Ada for taking the bold step, a long overdue bold step, in getting these bridges built and doing whatever it is necessary for our government to do to make sure the greater good of our community is looked after and addressed. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Nicholas. Any other senator wish to be heard on the motion? Seeing none, I'll recognize the main sponsor to close.
Well, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I, you know, I guess if there's any worse time to introduce a bill on eminent domain, it'll be at this time of the season when we're just months away from an election. But in view of the fact that the, the acquisition is needed for, for public use, I think it's, it's important, and anytime, in, in this particular case, anytime would be a good time. Mr. Speaker, before I close, I would just like to make a simple amendment on page two, line 18. It says there on line 18, "Upon confirmation of belief based on, based on appraisals of the property, the sum of money estimated..." So, the appraisals have actually been done, and so, I move to delete the phrase "upon confirmation of belief." And simply then, that sentence will start, "Based on appraisals of the property, the sum of money estimated to be just compensation is $23,600."
On that amendment, any senator wish to be heard on that amendment? Any senator wish to be heard on the amendment removing those four or five words? Seeing none?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I think enough of my colleagues have already said, especially that my colleague from Jonya, that eight years delay is too long. If I speak for eight seconds more, that's more delays that is not needed, so I would just move that the Bill 355 be sent down to the voting file at this time. Thank you.
On the motion to send the bill down to voting file, any objection? Bill 340, Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move for the placement of Bill number 340, that's 32COR, in the third reading file with brief discussion, please.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. First and foremost, I just want to recognize that, I just want to make a general statement that this idea about foregoing a public hearing prior to entertaining legislation on the floor is not something that I take lightly. And I want to thank the good speaker as well as the majority leader for moving for the placement of Bill number 312, or 340, on the agenda today. It is time sensitive. And when I say time sensitive, about a few years ago, a couple of years ago, the good former chairman of Veterans Affairs was able to work collectively with the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs to acquire the sum in excess of $3 million to be able to expand the Veterans Cemetery. That construction has been taking place over the course of the last eight, nine months. We are getting close to the completion of that particular upgrade and expansion of the Guam Veterans Cemetery. And, Mr. Speaker, the executive director of the Guam Veterans Affairs Office had brought to our attention that there's a sliver of property which is to the northeast of the cemetery, which is indirectly across Ria's Middle School. There's a sliver at the corner of the cemetery which contains in excess of 20 grave sites. But the property line, based on where the mapping is and the recognized boundaries are, unfortunately, does not include that. So, what has happened here is the federal funds that were acquired, apparently, the design was completed to include the portions of property that right now are not under the ownership of the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs, but is under another government entity, the Department of Agriculture. Well, Mr. Speaker, in order to complete the design of that entire additional sliver of property, the Department of Agriculture and the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs entered into a memorandum of agreement which is contained, which was dated April 1st of this year to allow the construction and the design to proceed. Now that they've come to the point where they're coming to that corner of the cemetery, they need the title to be officially transferred over to the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs of that little sliver of property. So, Mr. Speaker, Bill number 340 would do exactly that, would allow the construction to proceed. I understand that the estimated time of completion is either the latter part of August or the first part of September for the completion of the overall construction. That being the case, the title of the property that I just alluded to needs to be transferred, officially transferred over for the construction of the wall to encompass the additional grave sites. I want to, Mr. Speaker, in addition to that explanation, I believe that the legislative findings and intent is self-explanatory, so I just, I will leave it at that in terms of anyone asking questions or inquiring about exactly what the history is with regards to the acquisition of this property or the eventual introduction of this legislation. But, Mr. Speaker, I need to, I would like to enter into the record because this is communication that came from Judge Pinku, who's the executive director of the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs, dated June 26th, and it highlights the critical timing of this legislation. He writes, "Dear Senator, I write to you to ask that the hearing on the cemetery, Bill 340, that's 32COR, be waived. It is absolutely urgent that this bill be passed as quickly as possible. As you know, we have a contractor working on the expansion and improvement of the Guam Veterans Cemetery. Part of the improvement is a fence to be built around cemetery property. The contractor has progressed to the point where the fence is at the disputed property. In order to prevent a contractor claim for damages and delay, Bill 340 must be passed, giving the Guam Veterans Cemetery that sliver of property." And I believe that particular communication from the director of the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs is self-explanatory, Mr. Speaker, so I want to thank the good speaker of Guam Pat as well as the majority leader and our colleagues here for allowing this bill to be placed on the floor because of the timing issue and allowing for the continual progress and eventual completion of the construction activities at the cemetery. And I want to also thank the executive director of the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs for communicating this issue and this concern with my office. Prior to stepping aside, Mr. Speaker, there are two other senators that were working on a similar piece of legislation and doing some research with regards to this parcel of property. One is the co-sponsor of this legislation, Senator Tony Ada from Sinahanya, and the other office, center of office that was also receiving information and was about ready to prepare legislation for introduction was, is the other good senator from Sinahanya, Senator Duñez. So, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to ask the Senator Duñez, and if he doesn't have any issues, that the good senator, other veteran in the, in the floor, Senator Tom Ada, be co-sponsors on this particular legislation. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
On the motion to add Senator Duñez and Senator Ada as co-sponsors, any objection? Hearing none. And both hands have gone up, so I'll first hear from Senator Duñez and then Senator Ada on the bill.
Sidoos Mosi, Mr. Speaker, to rise, of course, in full support of Bill 340-32. While I agree wholeheartedly with the retiring author that we do so sparingly on waiving public hearings, I wanted to first of all thank him for adding me as the co-sponsor and to definitely attest to the fact that research was done by my office after having been contacted by Senator Tony Ada on the preparation of this legislation. I appreciate the chairman for having introduced this bill and moving forward now. As we're all aware, as we drive by the Veterans Cemetery, there is ongoing construction. It is starting to look very dignified and very nice in terms of what is deserving of such a, a, a place of rest, Mr. Speaker. And so, because of the fact that I had been at land management prior to being fortunate to be elected to this body, I reached out to my friends over there and asked them if they would move quickly on the survey and what is entailed in this legislation to, to deal with the records division and ensure that meets and bounds and the like were, were straightened away and to ensure that this project would experience, hopefully, no delays, Mr. Speaker. So, I rise in full support. I thank the author for adding me as a co-sponsor and, and certainly lend the weight, Mr. Speaker, of the urgency, the nature of the urgency, and also the fact that the research has been done. This bill contains complete information to be able to ensure that there are no violations when it comes to the land meets and bounds with regard to this project. So, Mr. Speaker, once again, Sidoos Mosi for the opportunity to rise in support and provide some additional information with regard to this legislation.
Thank you very much, Senator Duñez, and for your efforts. Senator Tom Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. While I, I honestly believe that my colleagues in here will support this bill, I certainly do not want to be presumptuous of their support for the bill, and so, I would like to take a few minutes to just pitch my support in making the case for the passage of this bill. We've heard in, in years before, many veterans will lament about the sad state of affairs at the Veterans Cemetery. And in fact, many veterans would actually publicly state about, "If I die, I don't want to have anything to do, don't even, you know, I don't want to be buried at the Veterans Cemetery because it's not a place of, it, it doesn't certainly look like anything that you could call a place of honor that these, that these heroes can be laid to rest at." And so, we're, we're finally closing that chapter, slowly closing that chapter by being able to get federal funds and a GUF Guam matching, matching funds so that they can do the renovation of the Veterans Cemetery, which really would make it be a place that will be fitting for the burial of our soldiers and their families who have sacrificed a lot to protect our freedoms. And so, in that regard, this is that last, this is just another step again where we can, where we need to make that one final correction so that this project can be, can proceed without any further delays. When this bill was first raised, somebody said, "Well, why don't we just exhume the bodies and re-bury them further on to the veterans, within the confines of the veterans property, Veterans Cemetery property?" And, and to me, I thought, it was like, I almost fell out of my chair when that suggestion was made because I feel that there was, there was, certainly, there was good intentions made when, when everybody thought that that's where the boundary was. Those veterans have been buried where they are at now, and we should leave them to rest without any further disturbance, and if it takes, then extending out the boundary so that we can preserve those grave sites, then I believe that that is the right thing to do. And certainly, Bill, Bill 340-32 would do just that. So, I urge my colleagues to certainly support the passage of this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Senator Winia Barnes.
Sidoos Mosi, Mr. Speaker, real short, I just want to stand and rise in support of 340-32COR, and as I share the sentiments with all the previous speakers that spoke, I too just want to say that this will finally resolve the discrepancies and grant the transfer of this portion of property to the veterans' office and, and as we, as it relates to the Guam Veterans Cemetery, and, and I support that effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? If not, I invite the sponsor to close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and to all of our colleagues. I know that you've extended your, your support in some fashion or another since the introduction of this legislation. So far, veterans, I think enough has been said. We need to get this project completed so that, in fact, our veterans can once again be instilled with that pride of being able to look at that as a final resting place. Well, Mr. Speaker, because this individual also has, in the, in the hallway, also has family members that have served and are still serving, I'd like to move for the addition of the good senator from Mingila as co-sponsor. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Hearing no objection. On the motion to place the bill in the third reading file, no objection. Mr. Majority Leader?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, we have two remaining bills in the second reading file. The first bill is 316-32 is relative to raising the minimum wage, and the other bill is 312-32, and it's relative to the GMHA Healthcare Trust Fund. I, given that these are the only two bills pending in the second reading file, I then move that we recess until 9:00 a.m. tomorrow.
No objection. Recession till 9:00 tomorrow morning. Thank you very much, Senators.